Hey, it's Kaiser.
I know, that's why, that's why I didn't do it.
I know, I'm used to Rachel, you know, echoing everything, so I try to say it's soft, you know, slower, so you can hear them. Okay, we're gonna need a motion to sign the warrants.
I will make a motion to sign the warrant.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, suppose? So, you've given me permission to sign this temporarily, so you guys can get in here and sign paperwork when you ever get a chance. And we can get paid. Last week, I was doing, I was doing so well, and I totally forgot to sign anything.
Rachel.
I tried to sign until I had to come in the next day.
Rachel just joined the meeting. Rachel, do you also vote to sign the warrants?
Oh, absolutely.
Alright then, so next we need a motion to approve the minutes of January sixth as written.
So.
So move.
Yeah.
I can make that motion. I'll make that motion. Who else was there? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We can't see you yet, Rachel.
I know, I'm playing around with this.
Alright. Alright, no old business, uh, so I'll quickly just say something happy about, uh, the safe harbor. Uh, Oscar's working on the revisions, and nothing's going well, and we did, we got another check for five thousand dollars from Mattia Savings Bank for the maintenance fund.
Good.
So, we're still.
Thank you, Mattia's bank.
I'm here.
Oh, there's, there you are. So, we're, we have a sewer foreclosure that is, of course, you know, the old Nagongo building.
Aye, aye, aye.
And, um, well, I think it's a good thing, because it gives us a little bit of control over, uh, what happens now. I believe, I'll just, uh, say how I feel. I think it should go for a little more than the taxes, as the minimum, so that we can, uh, put stipulations of tearing down the building and, and market it as commercial property. I, if we, if we try to get, uh, too much money, we may not get the building torn down, and it'll end up sitting with us, and we'll have to go for a brownfield grant to tear it down. And that takes days.
My, my thought on this thing, Carol, was, uh, not just this, any kind, kinda, any old dilapidated building we put out. I mean, the board should really get it right in what their timeline is and what their plans are for the building.
Absolutely.
When we take their bid in, we don't necessarily have to take the high bid.
Absolutely.
So, that, yes, what's, what's, what's the plan of what they're gonna do, is, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I, well, my proposal is that the request, the request for bids states that, and we can dispute the minimum, but I suggest twenty-five thousand dollar minimum with, one, you have to tear down the building by October thirty-first of this, that, we, we don't have to look at it by the end of the summer, and that within that next year, they have a plan as to what they are going to put there.
Well, I mean, as far as.
And a timeframe, we have to put what they're gonna do, timeframe and the price, and that, and if they don't abide by the request, then the property reverts back to the town, and I believe we can legally do that.
Right, but tearing it down, is it?
I mean.
There's probably sections of the building, there's probably sections of the building, if somebody wanted to put money into it, they could save and make it decent, uh, you know, so, I mean.
Well, they could renovate it, but it's in pretty bad shape as far as I know, except for the foundation.
Right, I know the foundation's in really, really good shape.
Right, so, huh.
I've been through it. I, I've been through it, and I mean, I wouldn't want to discourage anybody from, you know, by saying, "You've gotta tear it down by such, such, such a date." I would rather say, "Okay, you've gotta do something with it," like, either start renovations or.
Okay, they can bring it back up to a functioning building, which, but I understand that the motel part, that the walls are not built correctly, fire-wise, to have any, any multiple living space there, so, uh, they're, would have to be brought up to fire code, and they would have to make it a viable business, and we could put, uh, yeah. Your idea of putting it out to bid for, and the reason why you don't ask for as much money is you're hoping to get someone to sink money into the property, and that's what the town is trying to do, I believe.
Then I, it would behoove us to find out what specifically the plans are before we do that new sale.
I think that's part of the bid, so if someone says, "I'm gonna give you fifty thousand, I'm gonna put this nice lovely thing there," and then this other person says, "I'm gonna give you a hundred thousand, but I'm not doing anything with it," I mean, we can't have nobody do nothing with, I mean, that's bad English, sorry, grammar, grammar there.
That's alright, I gotcha. I was gonna.
You know.
Point out that, no, the neck again.
Uh-oh, whoops. But, uh, I, it has to be worded correctly, so let's, let's decide what the minimum bid is first, and then let's see if we can come up with the two or three requirements, and then we're gonna, we can tentatively vote on that, and then Renee can send that request for a bid to our lawyer to make sure we didn't do anything wrong.
Could I inject an idea here, before we go off half-cocked, as my mother would say, and with a big plan that we may not be able to follow through with? I just wanna inject thinking outside the box, not cliche, but I have always seen that particular space, uh, as the town office. I think a town office would be wonderful there, uh, and lots of, you know, little offices around it that we could accommodate, uh, little, maybe like a chamber of commerce or anything, but that location is a beautiful location. The only problem is that you, you do, you got the money, and I would, I talked to Renee about this today, there have got to be grant, I've seen them, grants out there that will supply, uh, a municipality with money enough to create a structure to house them.
Well, that's all well and good, you're not looking at me doing the grant, and I think outside money, outside money should come in and develop that land. I think the yachts we have here is perfectly adequate for a town, town of thirteen hundred.
Out of that line, but you also have the fire department right next door, and as the town grows, you're gonna get squeezed out. The other thing I do wanna say is that, um, the grant would be a federal grant, and you wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't want some private little grant to come in and tell us what to do.
Yeah, I, I, I do, do, Carol. I say unload the damn thing, and have some to tear down, and.
Uh, yeah, we could only have one major federal grant going through this office at a time, and this office is up for safe harbor for the next three or four years. And, you know, I mean, it, it's gonna involve extra auditing, and Suzette's offered to help with the whole project, so that we have someone overseeing, somebody else that we hire, that isn't gonna take some of the money and we get responsible for it later, so I, I, on my watch, hesitate to take on any more grant monies.
I, I totally sympathize.
It could be years out, it could be years out, you don't know, you know, grants, grants don't happen. I do know, Carol, but I don't.
No, well, I, we have, we, yeah, so I would like some, I like the idea of people proposing, um, different ideas, and once we get the package out, Renee and I both have ideas, and you as well, uh, to approach people that you might want to develop here, let's say, well, just poor Mr. Butler, we'll, we'll give him as an example. Let's say I called Mr. Butler.
What's the poor about Mr. Butler?
We really think an outdoor, kinda, Cadillac Mountain Sports kinda place would be wonderful to put there. Who do you know that might be, that we could call to say, "We have this property here, that's reasonable," and that they, of course, have to bid, so we can, in those four weeks that it's advertised, reach out, to use that, Don Sutherland's term, reach out to someone and that we would like to develop, and see if they'd be interested in placing a bid, but as far as the lawyer goes on the bid, no matter who we ask if they're interested, we have to go through the closed bidding process.
Well, let's, let's, let's figure out, I, I can go with the twenty-five thousand dollar minimum. I mean, that's, that's fine.
But they have to come up with a good plan in a timely manner. That's basically what I'm looking for, a good plan in a timely manner. So, they gotta sell, the time, what are they gonna do with it, and what's their money? So, what are you bidding, what are you gonna do, and what are you gonna do with it? Those are the three criteria of what.
I'm with you, I'm with you a hundred percent on that.
Okay, don't have anybody else, that's two. Uh, Dan, you said nothing. You're talking about the area.
I, I, first off, would say I don't think we need to rush. Um, I'm personally, uh, historically, in the years we've been doing this, I'm a little tired of giving things away practically. Um, I think the town has an opportunity here to make some money back, and I understand it's like, put a minimum of twenty-five thousand, and let's see what we get.
Yeah.
I'd like to sit back for a minute, I mean, it's only been a couple days, uh, maybe get an assessment as to what is an actual value of that property, with the structure, without the structure. I know we can always not accept a bid and put stipulations on it, but maybe we, while we sit back, maybe we craft what those stipulations are, then put a proposal out, where we also know what is a reasonable price, not just a minimum.
Well, I, I, I.
Again, I don't understand.
Oh, go ahead, who wanted to talk? Sonia?
No, it wasn't me.
Sonia, have anything to say?
I think twenty-five thousand is a little low, but I'm just listening right now.
Oh, okay, well, well, obviously, we don't wanna take twenty-five thousand, but I think that the property owes us twenty. What we're trying to do as a town is move the town forward in development, and if you're just looking for money, that doesn't happen, you don't get the best development idea. The best development idea comes where someone thinks they're going to get some kind of a deal to make something in the long term, a building that will bring us lots of lovely taxes, if you just get the money.
What if, what if you get somebody coming in there, like, let's say, a Mickey D's, and he wants to put a big McDonald's right there downtown?
Well, that's why we're asking for price and idea and time, timeframe. Who's calling Mickey D's? I'm not.
Does anybody have an idea on how much that thing's gonna cost for somebody to tear it down? I mean, has anybody thought about that? I mean, the property's only worth so much, it's gonna cost a bundle of money to tear that place down and get rid of it.
Yeah, a lot of money, and it's still, but you're not gonna buy it, you're not gonna buy it.
It also has, it also has the fuel, it also has, the fuel tanks are still there, and with the fuel tanks still being there, it's, that is a big expense to get rid of fuel tanks.
But if you're not gonna buy it, what do you care? Somebody's gonna come in there, they're gonna know what's entailed, and they'll either wanna make an offer, it's whether, what's entailed as, uh, in conjunction with what they can make, so.
We have to make the offer sweet enough, like many towns, there are many towns and cities that will defer ten years of taxes to bring somebody in there, so all we have to give to them is a carrot, bring somebody, you know, nice, is gonna build a structure that isn't gonna fall apart, something eye appealing and all, is to put it at a minimum bid and see what their, what their different ideas are.
Yeah.
And to give them a time reference to finish it, or it reverts back to the town. Now, that's one of the things you have to look at, if they buy it for an inexpensive amount, and they don't do what they say within the year, then we get it back.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just wondering, can, can we, can we not necessarily put the cart before the horse and get our paperwork in line, then put the bid out?
Well, it has to be bid for four weeks. We, we could wait a couple of weeks, but I've been told, uh, told that we don't sell it by April first, and we have to, we, we have to eat all the taxes for the next year, and plus, if you don't get someone interested in it now, you're not gonna get anything done this summer, and I don't know.
Marketing will be crucial.
Excuse me?
Your marketing will be crucial.
Right, and we can't market anything, you can't market it at all unless it's put out to bid, and then you've got a bid package, you get four weeks to market it, and then when we get the original bid, which may, may be done, then we don't accept any, and we, we, we send it out to bid again, Dan. It's not like, you know, we can, we can wait, but at least, this is the time to market a property for the spring, right now. This, I bought all five of my places in February, which I've sold them.
My biggest, my biggest thing isn't so much the price, it's what are they gonna do with it? That's gonna bring tax revenue to the town.
Yes, and I think that we've got the AOK from MMA, Rachel's, uh, Ree, sorry, Renee sent MMA questioning, and also Sally DiNagio, both of them said that we can as sellers, but stipulations on how we're selling it, as to their, um, since it's commercial and it's being developed, and it was commercial, that they can give as a town municipality, we can weigh the different ideas as to what would be best for the town, and how long will it take for them to do that? And that's, that's really the stipulation, the minimum bid, what are you gonna do with the property, and when are you gonna do it? And we won't even say you have to tear it down, if they decide they're gonna fix it up, and that's, it's up to their idea, but they have to be, they have to be specific with the plan, and they have to, um, at that point, Dan, i- if you accept their, this, this person's idea, then we probably need to have a second meeting with them, so that they can spend a little more time with their idea. And maybe we don't give them the definitive, "Okay, we like your idea, we will like to sell it to you, but not, you know, when exactly are you gonna do it, and what is it gonna look like," kind of thing.
Because this town has no zoning ordinances, we really can't impose any regulations on them.
We can have specifications on our sale, though.
Yeah, right.
That's the, like, that's the order of the zoning.
But if they wanna put up a, a porn bookstore, or something like that, there's nothing to stop them from doing it.
If they just buy it outright, but I believe we can put a stipulation on they have to bring us what they're gonna do with the building.
Okay.
Are they gonna tear it down or build? What is the, we can accept or reject any offer. Correct, Renee?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
She's shaking her head. So, I think you just look to see, we should be lucky if we get three ideas and three offers, because they, you know, it's not just, you can't just, this request for a bid is not gonna be just money. You were, you should say, yeah, it's gonna be graded on three grades, the money, the idea, and the timeframe.
It's almost burned down.
The taxes on it, boy.
Excuse me? Go ahead, Jason.
It's, it's almost been burned down twice already. And I'm kinda concerned if that place catches on. The gray apartments are gonna go, the house, houses next to it could go, you know, time isn't really on our side.
No, well, do you want, I, I thought you said you wanted to, you didn't want to preclude anybody, you wanted to, to rent a big existing building?
No, no, exactly, I mean, I don't.
Well, and maybe the timeframe is, they gotta, they have to substantially improve the property by October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, it gives them the whole summer to do it.
Definitely, we have to basically approve what they're gonna do to begin with, so, yeah, I mean.
How about that timeframe? I mean, I'm tired of looking at the building the way it is. I'd love to have it expat in one summer, and that is why the price is the way it is, Dan.
But we owe the tax pages, we bring, we get something in there that's gonna bring us tax revenue, that's gonna be good for everybody in town.
I agree, and, you know, I, I, I would like to know the, the, uh, the size of the lot, because I think it's pretty big. I think a lot of different things can go there. I don't wanna mention what I think could fit there, I just said maybe a sports store, or, you know, someone mentioned the Hamilton Marine, or I, you know, I don't know.
It's two point.
Or I think someone said low-income housing, I mean, there's, I, I don't know what would be best for the town, so let's put, throw it out there, the universe, and see what we get. Let's see what ideas come in.
It's two point two-five acres.
And you're right, Rachel has to be marketing.
It's two point two-five acres.
That's a pretty big lot in the center of town, and it's.
Slides down the back, right?
Yeah.
And the nectar.
Yeah, 'cause there used to be, that's where Johnny fixed the carps under, in the back.
Yeah.
I think it's, uh, two or three times the size of what the, the Dollar Store property's on.
Yeah.
At least twice as big.
And if any of you wanna go see it, let me know.
I'd really like to listen to the universe, Carol.
Oh, great.
Yes. Very good. Oh, man, you're so zen tonight.
You couldn't say no to anything, either one of you. You have to be lying in high.
I'm being very Democrat.
Well, I'm trying to work on that myself.
What do, so what do we wanna do here? We wanna set a minimum?
Well, I'd say, yeah, twenty-five thousand, which is low, but, you know, you might bring some people in.
What are the, what are the taxes on that property annually?
About forty-four hundred.
That's not bad. And Renee, could I work with you on the wording of the ad, 'cause I think that might be, uh, key?
Well, what are you gonna, what, what kind of wording?
That's the one.
Well, it's gonna be, right, it's not an ad, it's a, it's a tax-required property for sale, and we need to be pretty clear of what the three points are, because it's then gonna go to a lawyer, so there's not a lot of legal room as to what you're gonna say. What are you suggesting, Ms., Ms. Graham?
I know it's insignificant, but could we then maybe make the minimum thirty? That way, that extra five thousand is paying if it goes past April first.
Oh, it's, I think they only owe twenty, I've already asked, act on five thousand.
Okay.
I think, right, Renee?
We already did that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we already added five thousand.
As, as far as this goes, the way I see it is we're gonna do one motion for the minimum, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then we'd have to do one for the stipulations. Look, I mean, Dan, if you wanna go thirty, I'm good with that, twenty-five thirty is reasonable. Either way, minimum, I mean, what do you guys, what are your feelings on this? Between twenty-five and thirty, I mean, I can go.
All right, but up to you guys. I make a motion, we make the minimum twenty-five. Do I have a second?
All seconded.
Do I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was it three ayes? I couldn't tell.
Was that an aye, Mr. Butler?
I'm a, I'm a twenty-five thousand dollar universe listener, so.
Okay, okay. So, that's, well, that's a go. Everybody said aye, I guess. So, the next stipulation would be, um, it's, it's really a, just a second one. We want a, a detailed plan of what you would do with the building, and, and that leaves open that they can say, "We're gonna fix it or we're gonna tear it down," and when are you going to do it?
That goes in the end.
To be approved by the select board.
Absolutely, excellent, 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 Jason, as to be, to be, to be approved, well, of course, the whole bid will be approved, but the whole thing has to be approved by a select board, yes, or a planning board.
We can do that.
The select board.
Do we want the whole thing to be done by, uh, do we want, put it in a time, just to ask them when they're gonna get it done?
And that needs to be part of that discussion. Like, okay, that's a lovely idea, when are you gonna get this done, because we can't wait forever.
Well, see, apparently, the whole restrictions and the, the whole stipulations go in deed, and the deed won't be written up till we make a final agreement with the people, and it will say, we do have to say that if the stipulations are not, if, if the agreement is not met, and that will be when we go, you know, we actually sell it. I don't think it has to be in the proposal, but we'll ask, we'll ask, um, the lawyer, that we need to say that if you don't abide by your plans and the timeframe of the project, then the property reverts back to the town. We have to say that.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't put that in your initial ad.
Because as the twenty-five, uh, thousand is, is such a low price, that's what they end up paying, and we have to know that that, we're practically giving it away, so that it has become developed properly.
Yeah, yeah.
So, they, they lose their money if they don't stick to their timeframe, and that's where we need a lawyer. So, I don't know, go ahead.
Well, you're, yeah, you're dealing with a sticky zoning thing, and I wanna make sure you, uh, talking to a lawyer right up front would probably be.
Well, we have to talk to her, but she, we're gonna send her the, what we agreed on tonight, she's gonna show, rewrite it, and we can send it out to all of you, and you can take a look at it again.
Okay.
And then we can wait and finalize it next time, in two weeks, if you like, or we can.
Yep.
Wanna do that?
I agree, yeah, Renee can get everyone on.
Where would we have our guys? Okay, so the next motion.
I have it, Carol, that you made a motion to, motion, a detailed plan of what will be done with the property and when, and approved by the select board, if somebody wants to second it.
Yeah, yeah, somebody second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, um, I think you want, you probably want to, uh, suggest to Renee to run by the lawyer, and can we put a stipulation in the agreement that the property reverts back to the town if they don't do it?
Yeah, that might need to come later, but I, I agree.
Well, it might need to come up front, too, so.
Yeah, clear that up with the lawyer.
Yeah, can, and do you need a motion for that, or just the directive, Renee?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so just find out whether that has to be in the proposal. Okay, very good, that's excellent. I can't wait to see what pops out. Um, COVID policy, did anybody get a chance to review that? We're trying to come up with something. We changed the, um, time after reviewing the CDC guidelines, again, and speaking to Marilyn today that runs the medical center, and getting some handouts for all the employees. There, there is a policy that if you're quarantined, or you think you might be exposed to COVID in your home, and you get, start getting symptoms, the symptom becomes the day one, and then you have to stay home for ten days, and you have to be without a fever, without any fever-reducing medicine in you, for, oh, for twenty-four hours, and, and at least ten days. So, you're home, you're there five days, you get a cough, sore throat, that's day one, then you do ten days, and after the ten days, if you have no fever, you can return to work. So, that is where we cut fifteen days, that we would cover fifteen days of an employee if that happened to them. And that's exactly what the Family's First Coronavirus Response Act did. They said that we had to pay for two weeks for employees that were out on COVID-nineteen. That's what our policy says in, in pretty much so many words.
Okay.
So, we thought we'd make a municipal policy.
I know, it's a good idea.
Okay.
Do you need a nomination, I mean, a vote?
Need a motion, Rachel.
Yeah, I move that we approve this new policy, the employee absence policy, uh, effective year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, are those opposed? No. Okay, other business. Oh, Renee gave me some appointment papers. I guess we are going to, uh, I guess I'll make a motion to appoint Barbara Thompson on the Celebration Committee, and Paul and Mehan on the Celebration Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Okay, so we'll need a couple more signatures for these. And Renee, you're on, you have anything to say?
I could just update, uh, the board. We had our, uh, annual risk management inspection from our MMA insurance today, uh, yesterday. They focused on the fire department and public works this year. Uh, he was very impressed with our training records and the how well organized everything was. Uh, he was blown away with the public works garage, and, um, we just had a few minor things to address. Um, of course, they have to find something every year, so, uh, we will take care of those issues and report back to them, and all as well. Good for another year.
Excellent.
Well, I must say that, I must say that public works building is incredible.
And who had something to do with that, Jason? I'll never forget, I'll never forget just, just being there the first time, and you said, "We had the engineers, we had the very expensive Sewell Engineering Plans, and we had the, um, make-it-yourself, you know, steel building plans," what was his name? So, you come to me and you said, "Carol, do you think we could move the door over a few feet, because as the plants read, there's gonna be a pole there?" Because you had the ability to merge these few plans, which was. Because you had the ability to merge these two plans, which was very, very appreciative. And we saved money on that project in spite of the fact that, of all the craziness that went through it and the inside got done. And I think one thing that Renee was saying she had to fix was there has to be a, a different kind of, um...
railing.
Handling of the stairs, I mean, so, something little like that. Railing, uh, more appropriate railing. That was about all I heard.
Wow.
Anyway, yeah, it's really good, I know. And we do have to find, we have to, we're getting into budget season, Renee, do you wanna suggest what we're gonna do with that, when that's gonna start for people?
Right, um, I was looking at our budget today and I was remembering that the Budget Committee and the Select Board had, uh, really, uh, in, uh, insisted, might be too strong a word, but recommended, uh, that we do, um, merit raises instead of just straight across the board raises. So we have been doing the evaluations this year, uh, so have the, uh, department heads. And, uh, Carol mentioned to, that, uh, cost of living raise should be included. Uh, we talked about the figure of one point five percent for cost of living.
I, I thought that we would go with half of what we normally would to do for cost of living and then, and then incorporate the merit raises along with that. I, I don't know what you think about it, but it's plenty of time to discuss it with the budget. But Renee just needs some figures to hand to us to look at.
Right.
That seem reasonable, Dan?
Yeah, I've always been for merit.
Yeah, so one and a half cost of living and then a merit.
Yeah, it's a, it's a nice, it's a nice baseline to start, yes.
Okay, good. So, uh, that will be, when do we start those? February? I can't remember, Renee?
I, when I first took this position, I had tried to start earlier in the season, but I've learned that really with, you don't get the good numbers until towards the end of the, the year, which is June. So, I'm thinking right now, the beginning of March, we can start looking at it, scheduling the dates for the budget meetings and then probably getting into it in April, March. I mean, April, May.
Now, last time, I think we met an hour earlier and I think that wasn't good for Jason.
Yeah, I mean, even, even five o'clock.
Five is hard. So maybe what we're gonna have to do is Budget Committee. Unlike to do with, well, could we do the Budget Committee at five on the opposite week? That we all remember the same five o'clock every, every week till the budget's done? Because by the time we get to a budget meeting and then we go to Select Board meeting? I can't even think.
No.
My brain is gone after the budget meeting.
That's a great idea. I, I would...
Fair.
I can run the budget meetings from home, so I can do my computer right from home, as that goes.
Well, it's like...
So we're just gonna do five o'clock, um, you don't wanna be, I think committee has to... Oh, we're all zooming, right? The budget meeting is gonna be zoomed, right, Renee?
Yeah. I presume. I presume.
Can you, can you refresh my memory? I can't remember who got on Budget Committee.
Mike Jenkins.
The Budget Committee.
Mike, Mike Jenkins, Debbie Holmes and Denise Rule.
Michael Jenkins.
Debbie Holmes and Denise?
Yep.
Did Denise get on again?
Yes. She was elected.
Oh, yes, there we go.
Yes, I voted, I voted for Denise.
Well, of course, I thought we appointed her and she never had to run, did she?
Jason, stocking up to the press.
She was a write-in. She was a write-in the year before, so that meant she was elected.
So, they're all gonna have to come and get their votes, how are they gonna come and get the, uh, how are we...
I'll notify everybody.
Come on.
I'll notify everybody.
Okay, all right, Dan. Well, I think the chicken is cooking. Must be time to, I don't think there's any committee updates right now because unless we have to meet, we're trying not to. That's the only, the Select Board, obviously, is meeting. I don't know, Shellfish will probably start meeting pretty soon, right, John?
Hope so.
Yes, he'll know. And it's out and as need based as the meetings right now.
That's right.
So, stay well, the vaccines are coming. I've been registered, I don't know...
Can I throw out quickly as much as, of course, we want everyone to stay healthy and some people have been sick and recovered and, and bless that moment, but we can send out a healthy prayer and thoughts to one of our favorite Lebec sons with, um, Cecil.
What's the deal with...
He does well and, and recovers.
Well...
I mean, that's, that's...
Does he have COVID?
We're private, I'm just, would like to reach out a little well wishes to him and his family and hopefully he comes home soon.
Does Cecil have COVID?
I don't believe so, I just think it's something else, uh, but I throw out there.
Well, I think, I think that's the good thing to say, who has what. I, I would like to also, uh, reach out for Andy Cross, who's been a wonderful, um, supporter of our community and he, he is, um, ill and needs our prayers. So I believe everybody who's been affected by COVID and everyone who is mentally being affected by COVID, it's a terrible strain. It's affected me, myself, and I know that I just wake up some mornings and say, really? It's still here? And so, so much for the fifteen days of isolation, we're going on a year. So it's really a strain on everyone's, um, happiness and... What's to it?
You gotta live life.
That's right, breathe breathing every day.
You gotta live life and smile.
Which is hard to do with a mask, Jason.
And Andy, Andy and Cecil are two of the finest. And I hope they can get well soon.
Yes. Shout out to Randy and Kelly Hall. Yes. And everyone who cares.
And I'll let you know, nice driveway, Jason.
Oh, you like that, you don't?
Yeah, I saw a picture of that, very nice.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda, it's kinda Danny Hall's job, but it, it gets me in here.
All right, guys, we'll see you in a couple of weeks, thank you for all being here.
John has a, John Rule has a question.
Public question.
Oh, public comment, sorry, John.
Yeah, you're supposed to ask that. It's right there on the...
Well, we thought you'd speak up.
I wait until it's my turn.
Okay.
I do have a question. The town authorized a public, a complete town reassessment of our property taxes. Can you give us an update of where that process is?
Good question, John.
That's, yeah.
I can give you that big.
I, I asked you that and, uh, you said that, um...
Jim is working on it. He has just figured, yes, he has gone to the state website and got a boilerplate RFP and he's been able to put it in our system to be able to, um, adjust it for Lebec's needs. So he is actively working on that. He showed me yesterday the progress that he had made on it. So he, it is...
Is that where the bid process is, is that right?
It will be, yes.
Okay.
Right, go out to bid.
Right.
So I hope that's in the next month or two. It's, it will take, you, you remember, it will take up to two years to be completed and then another year for it to actually be in the system. So even if it started this summer, it wouldn't be till two to three years that it would be reflected on our taxes. But it's a start, money aside. And we're getting new buildings, we're gonna get a new building by, we're hopefully, with the monogles and there's plenty of nice, I see there's a new building on Water Street and you have the tax, it has the tax assessment.
I used to go on, Dan.
That's cool, that's cool.
Oh, teasing.
Good, good night, sir. Lot of construction, lot of construction, town, uh, lot of wonderful people coming, so it's, it's, it's all good. Very good.
You know, the taxes are double on the last half of March.
Oopsie doops, you should've got one of those modules, module.
Yeah, I think that's what Abe Lincoln said, uh, a long time.
Well, uh, who would like to make the motion to adjourn?
Tell them.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? All righty, we'll see you in a few weeks, have a nice two weeks.
Be healthy, everybody.
Don't forget to come sign some paperwork when you're around. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.